Call the meeting to order, would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the first meeting of the regular, the first regular meeting of the Board 2023. Ginny, would you take the role? Collins?
Here.
Coyle?
Here.
Iker?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Patrice?
Here.
Yusuf Abramson?
Here.
Owen?
Here.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and start with 207's Best for Academic Achievement this month, and we will start with Maine East. Dr. Tykel?
Thank you very much.
Sarah, do you want to come up and stand?
Maine East is pleased to recognize Sarah Phan as one of 207's Best in the area of academic achievement. Learning about Sarah's academic path over the last four years is overwhelming. She is committed to rigor and excellence in ways beyond that of our highest achieving students. What's best, though, is that Sarah talks about her academic endeavors with the same enthusiasm that teenagers talk about most anything they love. Her passion and energy for learning are only overshadowed by her friendly and warm personality. When Sarah reflects on her learning journey, she cannot remember a time when she didn't love exploring new ideas. She remembers doing Khan Academy for fun. She loved math and that it could be gamified and was motivated by the challenge of learning new concepts quickly. Sarah started meeting the challenge of the high school curriculum in middle school. She was ranked at the state level in the Honeywell Chemistry Challenge in both seventh and eighth grade. It's not common that a ninth grader comes to us with a background in chemistry, but Sarah had just that. She entered Maine East ready for AP Calculus BC and AP Chemistry, a schedule that had never been taken by a ninth grader before. Sarah has gone on to excel in the most rigorous course offerings, never achieving less than a five on an AP exam. Ms. Ed Twiler, Sarah's chemistry teacher, had much to share about her awesome experience with Sarah. She's contributed to the chemistry department at Maine East since she walked through our doors. Because of COVID, AP exams were shortened and school went online. But due to Sarah's leadership in class and the enthusiasm she spread to her peers, the class of AP Chemistry students were determined to make an excellent showing. We met every day on Zoom and even extra hours to get in the review. In such a dark period of time during the pandemic, I had never seen such a remarkable attitude of perseverance and determination from students like Sarah. Even though the AP Chem exam was shortened to test only units one through seven, Sarah insisted that she learn the full curriculum and she went on to complete the remaining units on her own. Since then, she's been an integral support for the AP Chemistry students that followed in her last three years of high school. Mr. Peters has a similar experience with Sarah. She's a terrific student who has genuine desire to learn and engage in academic discourse. Sarah demonstrates this on a daily basis by participating in class discussions and asking insightful and reflective questions, which show a critical and nuanced understanding of the concepts and the topics being discussed in class. Sarah has elevated expectations of excellence in the classroom and helped create a culture of motivated and curious learners. It's been a real pleasure working with Sarah this year in AP US Government and Politics. You can imagine the energy that must be devoted to studying in Sarah's world, but what I found to be most intriguing about her is how she's infused her learning passion into extracurriculars. Sarah's extracurricular resume alone demonstrates that her love for learning is motivated by innovation and problem solving well beyond GPA and test scores. Sarah has been very involved in both Scholastic Bowl, where she's the varsity captain, and math team, where she's earned a spot as an oralist. The Scholastic Bowl's success at Nationals in Atlanta last summer was a memorable experience, as it was Sarah's first time on an airplane, and she loved it. Sarah has found much success on her math team this year, earning first place in every meet. She's currently ranked sixth in the state among a 54-school division. Sarah also plays the violin and has been a member of Demon Strings. She enjoys the community trips to share her music. Sarah is also a member of Astronomy Club, Principal's Advisory Counselor, the Council, the Gifted Lyceum Program, and she's a Schuler Spouter. In gathering teachers' feedback about Sarah, you'll notice the consistent references to her love of learning, helpful and bright personality. Mr. Ruth shared that Sarah is an incredible student, hardworking, reflective, and helpful. She's an even more incredible person. She balances commitments to extracurricular activities, and her drive to use her strengths to help others is truly remarkable. After helping design a service plan to work with the organization Lemons of Love, Sarah has managed communication with them and helped organize two card drives and a fundraising campaign. Through it all, Sarah has maintained a positive, inclusive, and kind attitude. She's been a joy to work with, and I'll miss her dearly next year. Mr. Schultz shared that Sarah is unquestionably in the top 1% of students that he's taught in his 20-year high school teaching career. Her success in physics is remarkable, and her questions show an interest in learning, not just getting the grade. As a sponsor of the Astronomy Club, I can attest to Sarah's enthusiasm and commitment. Last year, she was one of a handful of students who helped complete construction of a radio telescope. She volunteered to learn how to use Python coding to analyze data that we began collecting with the scope. She also helped to plan and carry out a star party event in which she invited students and their families from the community. This year, Sarah is the president of the Astronomy Club. Mr. Dottner shared that Sarah is undoubtedly one of the strongest students in the senior class, possessing a brilliant mind, an enthusiastic love for learning, and an unwavering commitment to excellence. Most impressive, Sarah serves as an oralist for the math team, a role that requires her to study topics in college-level mathematics and present solutions verbally to judges. Past judges have commented on how impressed they were with Sarah's thorough analytical thinking, impressive problem-solving skills, and eloquent explanations, with one noting, "She sounds like a college professor." Sarah is truly a remarkable young lady. As Sarah's counselor, Mr. Ibrahimovic has had a front-row seat in Sarah's spectacular high school journey. He shared that Sarah is one of the kindest and warmest individuals he's ever encountered during his time at Maine East. Her love for learning and knowledge is pure and focused on bettering herself as opposed to simply attaining a grade. Overall, she's taken the most rigorous set of courses he's encountered in his eight years at Maine East. She has exhausted the curriculum in every category to the point that she's taken concurrent enrollment math courses at Oakton during her senior year. He says that he can't wait to watch Sarah's future success. Believe it or not, Sarah does periodically find time for herself, in which she enjoys experimenting in the kitchen with cooking and baking. She also loves to read for fun. Obviously, Sarah will be greatly missed by many at Maine East next year, but she surely will not be forgotten. Thank you, Sarah, for all that you've shared with us the last four years.
Sarah, do you want to share who you brought with you tonight?
Yeah, my mom and my older brother.
Great, and tell us a little bit about your future plans.
So I'm kind of majoring in electrical engineering. I recently got accepted to MIT, so I hope to attend MIT.
Awesome. One of the hand clashmen. Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to Maine West.
Sabrina Bucareva, can you come on up here? So we know that the blessings of academic ability and life wisdom are not necessarily parceled out evenly to everybody, but I'm pleased and proud to say that in Sabrina, they are abundant, and both are. She's here tonight as Maine West honorary for 207's Best for Academic Achievement because she is hardworking and brilliant. But what I want you to know about her and what her teachers want you to know about her is that she's also very, very wise. When we met, Sabrina didn't talk much about grades or achievement, but she was super reflective about learning. At Maine West, she learned she is ready to take on leadership. "I always knew how to take charge," she explained, "but here I learned how to collaborate, how to learn from our diversity, how to communicate and learn from multiple perspectives so that we can all make an impact together." She consciously explored who she is, trying new clubs and classes and shifting friend groups, finding what she loves. And what she loves is math, but she also discovered a love for reading and writing and wants to find ways to incorporate the two. She will head down the path of studying economics, resolved not to leave her love of the humanities behind. "I am determined," she said, "to incorporate my passions into my work." Sabrina's distinction as a reader is most impressive when you consider that she began her educational career in the United States in English language learning classes. Some of her memories of those formative experiences returned to her as we talked about her journey as a learner, and she realized how crucial those lessons were in her development as a reader and thinker. Her home language is Ba'zim, and she recalls picking up a book in first grade and not being able to read it. And in ELL classes for a few years, she remembers learning things that she only now realizes were essential to her love of reading. She remembers reading rainbow magic books with her mom and sister and graduating to Magic Treehouse books. And a classmate told her once, "You can't read that book. That's too old for us." And Sabrina thought, "I'll prove you wrong." Now, with no time in her schedule to fit it in, she's teaching herself statistics. She uses Khan Academy and her friend's notes to keep up with the AP Stats class here at West, so she's keeping pace with that. Sometimes, how finding the time among her actual AP classes, an internship with the Chamber of Commerce, leadership roles in NHS, where she's the president, The Westerner, where she's the editor-in-chief, Pi Sigma Pi, DECA, Model UN. She's played golf for four years, she's on the principal's leadership team, and is a member of the Science, Math, English, Spanish, and Music Honor Societies. She was a section leader in marching band and a captain on mock trial, but she had to sacrifice these to make room for most of her other activities, not just to be in them, but to engage meaningfully and make an impact. And in this, you can see her wisdom on display to balance out her academic ability. Sabrina's teachers share my assessment of her estimable qualities. Mr. Sumina expressed full confidence in her skills and habits as a learner. Sabrina is a conscientious student who is willing to provide whatever it takes to get the job done. She isn't afraid to shift gears when an approach doesn't work for her, and she isn't afraid of hard work. She's comfortable speaking up when she needs assistance, something that students of her caliber often find challenging. I have no doubt that there isn't a barrier that could keep Sabrina from reaching her goals. Mr. Ruder enthused about Sabrina's professionalism, class, and talent in AP Lang with him as a junior, but remembers her especially fondly from the state journalism tournament, in which Sabrina took third place in feature writing. She is a talented and brilliant writer and student who will make Maine West and District 207 proud. Mrs. Maznowski praised Sabrina's efforts as a leader and standout in DECA. After their competition was canceled during Sabrina's freshman year, she emerged from the pandemic more determined than ever and took first in state as a sophomore, advancing to Nationals. This year, she designed and executed a pop-up thrift shop to raise over $800 for disabled American veterans for their competition project, which will be judged in March. Mr. Gersmeyer called Sabrina "the complete package, incredibly high achieving academically, well-rounded with talents and activities, and a kind, compassionate, respectful young woman. She has the ability to have people around her feel welcome and cared for. While we miss her sitting in the front row of Wind Ensemble, I hope she knows how proud we are of her and how much we miss her daily company. We also know that she is on the path to great things and wish her nothing but the best in her endeavors." And Mr. Fleming praised Sabrina's curiosity. "When I had Sabrina in class as a freshman, she was mature beyond her years. She was already an independent learner and was fully in control of her own learning process. She always asked the type of questions that, as a teacher, you just smile and are so glad that a student asks. They were always very in-depth questions about language and language structure that dealt with complex concepts. In addition to being a high-level learner, Sabrina is also a fantastic group member, always plugged into her group members, talking, asking questions, participating, and valuing each person." And I will say that I always have to pick and choose which teachers I'll share, I'm sure you do, too. But then this time, when we came back from break on Friday as a staff, I had three emails from teachers who said, "Is it too late? Can I get something to do about Sabrina?" In our conversation together before winter break, I asked Sabrina one of my harder questions. She can handle it, I figured, and actually, she schooled me. "What do you want me to make sure people know about you as I write this presentation?" And sometimes that throws the students off, I think, if I know a little bit of the stuff here. She took a minute to think, and then she said, "I am a girl who has never backed down, but has found a way to use the things I love to get out of dark places and grow. As a friend, as a family member, as a learner, I'm proud of myself for that." And so she should be, because if she knows as a young person how to use love and light to find light in darkness and joy in pain, she has wisdom far beyond we or what the university, lucky university that welcomes her next year can teach her. Sabrina, can you share who's here with you tonight and what your plans are for next year?
Of course. I brought my mom here today. And then my plans for next year are attending Harvard, and I will be studying economics.
Dr. Collins is here, so we are able to move along to Maine South.
Good evening, everybody. All abuse for my absent side duty. Maine South is pleased to recognize Kung Su Chong for our 207's Best in Academic Achievement. The entire time Kung Su has been at Maine South, he has been an immaculate student. He's always put his own degree of personal pressure on his shoulders. When we were talking in my office, and I was just saying, "You are doing things that rarely happens with our students, like how do you even kind of keep everything in front of you?" He just said, "You know, really matter-of-factly, I believe working hard isn't a means to success. I just feel like working hard is the reward." He's taken our most challenging course offerings. In retrospect, too, I think it's important to state that in our schedule now, in our block schedule, students can take eight classes, and Kung Su has done that. So he's got so many different interests across all of the different elements of the building. He's been a four-year member of the cross-country team, member of the orchestra, where he's an all-state violinist. He's also a national merit semifinalist. Kung Su is a member of HOSUP, which will also take him to the state competition, so pretty much everything he does, he's great at. He's one of our three TRYAM co-presidents, our Music Honor Society. Additionally, he's in Science, NHS, and NHS. He also is volunteering at the Skokie Hospital to gain experience in the environment he ultimately wants to work in, and he'll let you know what that is in a second here. When I asked him why he likes school, he said, "You know, the classes you take and what you participate in help you meet people that are like-minded and people that you would not normally meet." So he likes both ends of the spectrum. I enjoyed cross-country camp before freshman year. I was also the most tired I've ever been in my entire life. It was good to have that camaraderie before the school year started. So Kung Su, your counselor, Mr. Tortorelli, said, "He is simply one of the most outstanding students that I have had the pleasure of working with. His test scores and straight A record in his completion of our most challenging curriculum are most impressive, but it does not indicate just how far above his peers that Kung Su typically performs. He has established himself as a member of an elite group that I consider among the very best that I've ever encountered. He is extremely well-rounded, he's an extremely well-rounded student who enjoys learning across the curriculum, and he makes it look easy, but the truth is that he works very hard. Kung Su has developed an interesting and intense work ethic that is now simply part of his routine. He's able to quickly connect previously learned material into the current task at hand. He is a relentless problem solver of the most complex problems. Qualifying as a national merit semifinalist, scoring a 35 on his ACT and a 1540 on his SAT, and earning five on all eight of his AP tests so far, does support just how intelligent Kung Su is, but I am just as impressed by the thirst for knowledge that he displays. He loves learning. Kung Su is a welcome addition to any collaborative learning environment that he is part of. He has a knack for recognizing what role the group needs him to play. He is comfortable leading, but always enjoys watching others shine as well. Kung Su does not need to be the center of attention, but his peers are always interested in what he has to say. Laura Kirchner, his English 2 Accelerate teacher, says, "Kung Su is a phenomenal student in person. It was such a blessing to have him in English 2 Accelerated during sophomore year. Even though it was a pandemic year, I could always rely on him to be actively engaged and encourage thoughtful participation and analysis in class activities through his contributions to the class. Over the course of the year, he proved himself to be the MVP, the most valuable partner for our daily warm-up puzzles, seeing that he was on the winning team every single quarter. His intelligence, work ethic, humble nature, and endearing personality will serve him well in the future." Kung Su's track and cross-country coach, Mr. Nordell, wrote quite a few things in here, but I just want to take one excerpt from that, who said, "As Kung Su's cross-country and track coach, I have spent much time with him personally. During his running career, Kung Su has had his setbacks and disappointments that came from injury or poor races, but he's resilient in his efforts to return and become better. This attitude is exemplary and has helped him develop into a great leader. He demonstrates outstanding sportsmanship to his teammates and rarely has ever missed a practice over the course of these past seven seasons. Kung Su demonstrates positive sportsmanship consistently and is always the first to support his teammates." Kung Su's total body conditioning teacher, Mr. Tummelti, says, "Kung Su is a very fine young man to have in class. He is very disciplined in class and has a high grade point. Kung Su is very kind to others, always offering to help spot other students. Kung Su has a very strong work ethic and is very productive in class each day with a volume of weights that he lifts. Kung Su has had one of the top scores in our deadlift competition." Nice. "Kung Su carries an upbeat attitude. He always asks questions in class and participates a lot in our discussions. Kung Su sets a positive example in class, and after having Kung Su in strength training class on a daily basis, I can see why he does so well." And finally, I'm going to read an excerpt from Kung Su's orchestra teacher, Mr. Nix. "Kung Su has been a student of mine since he was a freshman. He is always genial, helpful, and oh so kind. How refreshing it is to be asked by a teenager, 'Mr. Nix, how are you?'" As a musician, Kung Su was one of the hardest workers I've met in my last decade as a high school orchestra director. He is a consummate student in the way that he takes constructive criticism and feedback, always with humility and with an eye towards the future. Just a few weeks ago, Kung Su was named as an all-state finalist, the highest honor that the Illinois Music Education Association bestows upon students. He is more than deserving of this all-state experience. Overall, Kung Su is a bright spot in anyone's day, especially mine. Anyone who crosses his path should consider themselves lucky." Wow. Kung Su, thank you so much. Can you tell us who's here with you this evening?
Oh, yeah, my dad, my mom, and my little sister are here.
Awesome. And what are your plans for next?
My plans are, I haven't studied more than college yet, but I plan to study chemistry.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Wow. You guys are really super impressive, and I wish you all the best as you venture east and not sure where yet else you're going. This is your chance, if you'd like, to step out and have a photo taken with your parents and principals. You're free to return to the meeting if you'd like, but if not, you know, thank you for being here, and thank you for all your work and for benefiting the district.
You want to take a picture?
Go ahead.
We had four of them. We met the last two kind of one.
Yeah, I wish I was Iowa.
My son works at Iowa.
There's no public comments over there, is that correct? There's no public. No, I think we should wait.
Okay. Sorry. No problem. No.
Hopefully he'll be quick.
He doesn't usually go ahead photos.
No, I'm just prigging.
Happy New Year. Happy New Year.
Just saying. Turn the volume down.
What's that?
And no cheering.
It's not super thick.
No. I'll do my best. Pardon me?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's too late.
No, not really what I'm.
Yeah, I actually do now. I do like watching in the ball, you know, in real time or something like that.
Generally. I can envision a gym recorded.
Those schools are going to.
I have a big thing that works, I watch a lot of wrestling. Get up on my exercise bike, you know, catch up on the recipe to a type. I would watch it that way.
You wouldn't expect that.
Yeah, it's not that many spoilers. It's not, you don't have to avoid.
Listening to that, you can wrestle.
No. Well, I usually don't even know the score, maybe before I start watching it. I'm just doing any good matches and don't watch that. Just evolving color. Big Ten is better in wrestling than the SEC as a football team.
Well, I know when I was at Iowa, the class, like the whole, was Dan Gable, I think, was still there.
I was there. I had a beer with Dan Gable.
Did you?
I went to the Iowa-Indiana, joined wrestling coaches in 1991. My assistant coach drove all the way out there.
He was still there, right?
He was still there. The Brans Brothers were there.
So proud of these kids.
They just grew so well.
Yes, yes. That was huge. That was from the Fran Brothers.
Yes.
Good. That's your big day.
Yeah, we had three o'clock.
But we can go ahead.
Okay, we're gonna, Ginny should be back in a moment, and Ken can update him individually, so. Guys, we're gonna go ahead. I did. Okay, okay. Ken, update from superintendent.
Couple of updates for our audience members watching us, hopefully on our YouTube channel. Semester two began today for students, and so we are underway. Teachers came back Friday, so it's hard to believe, but we are literally on our second half of the school year. It seems like it goes a little bit faster every year. This month, we have a couple of visitors coming to us in District 207. On January 25th and 27th, we've got students from South Korea from our sister school who will be visiting Maine East on the 25th and then Maine South on the 27th as part of a cultural exchange. Students will attend some classes, have lunch. Ginny, they must do the American lunch, so they'll never want to leave after they go to our lunch program.
This is their first time visiting the United States, so it will be a great memory.
And you think a high school lunch is going to make them stay? You have high hopes.
Sarah, I keep very forward to. Thank you.
And then actually, the next week, we have visitors from Montrose County, Colorado, who are here in September at the ASA visit. Montrose County, by way of geography, literally is at the edge of Colorado that borders Utah. They say it's real Colorado, it's out west of Telluride, and they have some building projects there in their schools, and we're touring our high schools when they were here. And the communication in their community was tear down a school, try to build a new one, or take an older building, like we've done here with three buildings. And they were so impressed, the superintendent was here, was so impressed, she's sending a team here, going to be with Mary and Brett and Dave Wallman and I and some folks from White Pepper so that they can look at the projects we've done. So it's interesting, the connections you make sometimes in the work. So that's all I have for updates.
Okay, thank you. Are there any updates from board members?
Just very quickly, I just want to say thank you for superintendent Dr. Ken regarding the, as you mentioned, visit from students from Korea MOU that we did. Total 26 student, high school students are coming, and graciously, Dr. Ken has been providing, and also our principal as well, and they're looking really forward to visiting our talented school. So thank you so very much for the assistance. And all the board members, whoever could make a stop by, have joined us for the lunch, high school lunch, if you will.
They're never going to want to leave after they have lunch, so they'll stay forever.
There you go.
Okay. Any other updates from board members? All right, if there are none, then update on Finance Committee meeting. Linda?
The Finance Committee meeting was held on December 19th, 2022. Members present were myself, Dean Patrice, and Sheila Yusuf Abramson. The meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM, and there were no public comments. First item we discussed was the SCRIMP insurance renewal, Assistant Superintendent for Business Mary Lu updated committee on the annual cooperative insurance renewal for property liability and workers' comp insurance. Schools participating in SCRIMP are automatically renewed unless an opt-out notice is submitted six months in advance. District property liability coverage went up with newly constructed spaces in addition of cybersecurity business interruption coverage, which is still being discussed. The business interruption coverage is valuable and covers equipment rental to get us up and running should we have an outage. In addition, SCRIMP uses a five-year loss ratio formula to ease some of the large loss costs. The district is very happy with SCRIMP, and the renewal will be presented as information at the meeting today. We also discussed Quest price increase, and unfortunately, due to continuing increases in food prices and wages, the district and Quest have worked on a list of food items that will increase beginning in January 2023. The cost of free and reduced value meals has not increased since 2017-18. The increase will only be about 25 to 50 cents per certain items. The district pays the cost of free meals and subsidizes the reduced meals for students who qualify. The amended prices will go for approved. The amended prices will go for approval at tonight's meeting. We also discussed the crossing guard agreement. The city of Park Ridge has provided crossing guards, a crossing guard at the Talcat entrance for several years. The city can no longer provide this service, and they have decided to outsource it to Andy Frame at a cost of $11,018 per year. The formal agreement, if approved, will cover this school year through 24, 25 school year. We discussed the 23-24 budget timeline and goals. Mary Calu began by saying that historically, the district performs better than the budget. The budget parameters include a $2.3 million tax abatement and additional staffing needs. The district projects running no more than a $1 million deficit and is very likely to end the year with a small surplus, and the budget will go on this way in July. The final item discussed was a possible property tax abatement. A possible abatement was discussed at the November meeting. The resolution for $2.3 million abatement has been reviewed by PMA and bond counsel at Chapman Cutler. The abatement will go for approval and be filed in January. Meeting was adjourned at 6:10 PM.
Just for clarification, the finance committee recommended that.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Linda. Moving on to buildings and grounds update. Terry.
So, meeting of the buildings and grounds was held on December 19th, 2022. Members present were Linda Coyle, Jin Lee, and myself. We called the meeting to order at 6:10 PM, and the roll was called. There were no public comments, and there was only one item on the agenda for that meeting, and that was the construction update. Assistant Superintendent for Business Ms. Mary Calu updated the committee on the construction progress. The field house at East is complete and turned over. The pool ceiling paint is complete with scaffolding to be removed next week. The pool locker rooms are near completion. Maine South and Maine West continue work on punch list items. Being no further business, we adjourned the meeting at 6:30 PM.
Thank you, Terry. Okay, we'll move on to monthly status of finances. Mary?
There are three items. The first is the November financial update. There's really nothing significant to discuss in November. You can see revenues are still lagging as we haven't gotten any property taxes, those started to trickle in, in December, so we'll start to see that line climb up closer to historical averages. The next item is the budget timeline and assumptions. It goes through how the budget is prepared. We present this information now as information in case the board doesn't like the deficit or the financial condition of the budget. Now's the time to make changes, where in July, staffing decisions have already been made and it's too late. Based on the information we have with new staffing, CPI, and other expenditures, we believe that the budget can be prepared with a deficit no greater than $1 million, and of course, this includes a facility master plan as that money was set aside, and that has some timing issues. Our challenges continue to be cost escalation because CPI has been higher than the 5% that we're allowed to access, changing needs and requiring additional staff for those, and then staffing turnover primarily in some of our lower-paying positions. And the final report, as indicated at the finance committee meeting, was the SCRIMP property liability and workers' comp renewal. Property liability, why not? Because of our property values. We, you know, with the renovations, we saw about a 20% increase in the value of our property. That translated, and we got appraisals done last year, so that was reflected in those appraisals. Cyber insurance has been going up across the board for every school district there is. We added the business interruption, and we're working on strategies to kind of maybe implement a SCRIMP layer in that cyber coverage. And then workers' compensation kind of remained flat. Our allocation really didn't go up. We have a self-insured, insured retention there that covers the majority of our claims, so the SCRIMP layer is primarily a little bit for claims and then our safety risk manager as well as a dedicated claims consultant. I will entertain any questions that anybody has on any of those reports.
Anybody have any questions?
So we just had one comment. We talked about it at the committee meeting, you, the new staff, right? The expenditures on new staff. So it's about a $1 million?
We, we don't know what it's going to be yet because we haven't had our staffing, but in terms of, we know that we're north of $1 million kind of on positions on the board, as I will call it. So I put in the budget to be built on $1 million in new staff, and I, I know that the request was made that once we start to get some kind of staffing information that to present a plan. And I know that I had mentioned to Sean that information and the ELL position and everything will get talked about at the education committee as well.
Carla and I today at EdRed did hear there's some pending possible litigation that will provide some financial support to districts like ours that have taken on some of the immigrant students, and as a result, have had to hire for that. Actually, Laura Murphy locally has helped lead on this.
I think that's, it's a dumb thing. I mean, it's gonna, it's passing.
I have another quick question. Mary, I was thinking about this on the way over here. The 5%, that 5% limit that the state has on us, was it instituted in low inflationary times?
Actually.
Early 90s.
I think 1994, the CPI was between 3 and 5%. So it wasn't relatively low inflationary times. I think that it, it was, and I only knew that because like, you had to figure out whether you're gonna marry or not. I was actually doing this back then.
If you go back to like 2010 before the recession, the 50-year average was 2.5, like the 10-year and 50-year average was 2.5.
It came as a direct result of common prac, I mean, there, there were no expenditure checks, so it wasn't unusual to see 5, 6, 7, 8% levies even when CPI was at a 2% inflationary rate. So I think that was the emphasis, not really, um, and, and I mean, we're just in a very unique time in tax cap because we, we, you know, last year was the first time that we ever hit 5%. This will be the second time, I think, that we're ever gonna hit 5%.
I guess I was just thinking back to the 80s, you know, like when there was 15, 20% inflation, you know, was that put in, you know, during that time? Is there any chance that would?
94.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is instructional services, but I don't believe.
No report this one.
No report this one, okay. That's a change for you. Had a few lately. Okay, other items. Ken, update on FOIA?
Three this month, and they either been processed or they're in process of being processed.
Okay. And Sean, just so you're not completely off the hook here, intergovernmental agreement for NCer.
So there's a first reading there of a new, really an updated intergovernmental agreement with NCer. For those of you new to the board or unfamiliar with NCer, we have what's called an EFE, which are common around the state of Illinois, which is Education for Employment. We're a small cohort. It consists of Nutrier, the Glenn Brooks, us, Niles, and Evanston, and it's how we process and oversee our Perkins funding for CTE, Career and Technical Education. So we work as a consortium to do that. I serve as the president of the Board of Control, and this is just the updated agreement for the first reading. Feel free to take a look at that. Any questions you might have to come out of it, but I can say that the changes that are being made are required by recent legislation. There's no fundamental change to anything we're doing other than updating the document so that it's in alignment with the most recent laws.
And all the changes are, there's a side-by-side here?
There's a side-by-side comparison so you can see where's the change.
Which is really nice. Thank you. Okay, so this will be second reading next month.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, could I have a motion on the consent agenda? Items A, E, 8, A through E. Second. Ginny, would you take the roll? Collins?
Hi.
Coyle?
Hi.
Iker?
Hi.
Lee?
So this was December 5th, so I was abstained on A.
Okay. Okay. Do you want to stay on the minutes?
So, but other ones, I think I can, but except.
Okay, let's amend the motion to make it for item, item 8A. We'll start with 8A. Could someone make the motion for 8A?
Second.
Okay. Ginny?
May I ask, there are two sets, A1 and 2, it's minutes for the public hearing and minutes for the board meeting that followed. Do we want to combine those?
Well, yes, because he, he wasn't here for either.
So A1 and 2?
Yeah.
Okay, myself and, you know.
Yeah, so 8A, we're gonna pull 8A fully off. Okay. Okay. Collins?
Hi.
Coyle?
Hi.
Iker?
Hi.
Lee?
Abstained.
Patrice?
Abstained.
Yusuf Abramson?
Hi.
And Lee? I'm sorry. Sorry. Hi. Okay. Now could I have a motion on A, B through E?
Second.
Ginny? Yusuf Abramson?
Hi.
Patrice?
Hi.
Lee?
This one, hi.
Iker?
Hi.
Coyle?
Hi.
Collins?
Hi.
Owen? Hi. I have a motion on item 9A. This is the city of Park Ridge crossing guard agreement.
Second.
Okay. Mary, I know you went over it a little bit.
As discussed in the finance committee meeting, they, our cost is increasing because they're no longer able to staff the house and are outsourcing it to Andy Frame. We've had a crossing guard for several years, kind of through a handshake agreement that they've just filled us, and this is the more formalized as the agreement.
This, as I said to Mary earlier, this is well worth every dollar because of that crossing area, and I remember when it wasn't, you know, manned, so. Okay, any questions on this? All right. Ginny, would you take the roll? Yusuf Abramson?
Hi.
Coyle?
Hi.
Iker?
Hi.
Collins?
Hi.
Patrice?
Hi.
Lee?
Hi.
Owen? Hi. I have a motion on item 9B, the Quest contract price increase.
Second.
These were necessitated by the increase in cost in food. It's been four years since we've increased the cost on our free and reduced and valued meals. The district is the largest parent, as we subsidize the free and reduced lunch costs, so this will end up costing us about $25,000 in our, in our rental cost. And we serve about $40,000 lunches annually.
All right. Any questions about that? All right. Hearing none. Would you take the roll? Lee?
Hi.
Collins?
Hi.
Coyle?
Hi.
Yusuf Abramson?
Hi.
Patrice?
Hi.
Iker?
Hi.
Owen?
Hi.
Could I have a motion on item 10, and if it could be read, the recommendation?
Second.
Actually, I'm gonna have the recommendation read.
Okay. Recommendation, if the Board of Education adopts the resolution abating a portion of the taxes levy for the year 2022 to pay debt service on the general obligation school bonds, Series 2019A of Township High School District Number 207, Cook County, Illinois, in the amount of $2,300,000 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any?
No, this resolution has been reviewed by PMA, our financial advisor, as well as Chapman Cutler, who is our blind counsel. This resolution, if passed, will get filed with the county clerk, who will then apply it to, before the extension for the 2022 taxes go out.
Any other questions on this? Okay, hearing none. Would you take the roll? Coyle?
Hi.
Yusuf Abramson?
Hi.
Lee?
Hi.
Patrice?
Hi.
Iker?
Hi.
Collins?
Hi.
Owen? Hi. Okay. Take note of calendar items. We have any other committee meetings that aren't on here or anything? I don't know that we're gonna be doing anything, but are there any other communications or public comments? The only other thing I just briefly want to mention is the board members will be attending breakfasts with the board at the schools Wednesday morning, this coming Wednesday and the following Wednesday at each of the schools. We've been invited to do so, and we will be attending those. So you guys should have all heard where you're going. It's from 7:30 to 8:30 in the morning. Okay? Okay. Could I have a motion to go into closed session for purposes of student personnel, review of closed session minutes, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees?
Yes.
Probable imminent or pending litigation, and security procedures and the use of personnel and equipment to respond to an actual, a threatened or reasonably potential danger to the safety of employees, students, staff, the public or public property.
Second.
Collins?
Hi.
Coyle?
Hi.
Iker?
Hi.
Lee?
Hi.
Patrice?
Hi.
Yusuf Abramson?
Hi.
Owen?
Hi.
Okay. We will go to closed session. Could I have a motion to return to open session?
So we move?